My phone's not on, I have to go charge it. Is your phone on, do you need a charger?
Yeah, just bring the charger.
This, um, what's the date, 24? This April 24 city commission meeting will come to order, Madam City Manager. Well, before we start, before we start, we've had some significant events happen in our country over the last week, last Monday. There was a horrible incident in Boston where at least four individuals lost their lives, and then there was the event in Texas where I believe about 14 people or more lost their lives. We had even some individuals from the city of Tallahassee participate in the Boston Marathon. And thank God that they were not injured or hurt in that incident, but there were obviously four others and many, many others that were, suffered injuries during the course of that. And so I think it would be appropriate at this point in time, if we just take a moment of silence and remember those in Boston, as well as the individuals who suffered, who lost their lives and were injured in Texas. Let's take a moment and do that. Thank you very much, Madam City Manager.
Will you please stand and join me in the invocation? Heavenly Father, we thank you today for all of the resources you provide to us to be effective leaders in our beautiful city. This is the time of year to recognize and give thanks to our administrative professionals. This is Administrative Professionals Day, whose talent and abundance of skills are essential to our multifaceted operations. We count them as blessings as we carry out our daily duties. May our recognition of their work continue to inspire them, inspire us, and all of our staff to new sight, new heights of service. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, um, where are we, Madam City Manager? Any agenda modifications?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We do have, um, well, we, I thought we did.
You had one.
We actually don't have any.
I thought it was 1.0 something.
I don't see any. We do have a presentation to make, and we don't have any agenda mods. You have some things that have been added to the agenda since your last meeting.
Okay. I think we're on presentations at this point. I think the Mayor Pro Tem attended a workshop, attended a meeting, and in my stead, in, where was it, Chicago?
I'm in Chicago, yes, it was American Planning Association.
Okay.
National meeting.
And she would like to recognize those individuals who participated in that particular event, and we can do it from here, on the desk, or we can do it down there, whatever is appropriate, whatever you would like to do it, Madam Pro Tem. Go ahead.
Could you have the Star Metro folks who worked so hard for this award come up?
Hello, Star Metro folks.
Congratulations to our new director, Ivan Maldonado. Well, the first thing I want to do is have them all reach behind and pat themselves on the back, because they've been through a great deal of pain and suffering over the last two years since the implementation of the decentralization project with Star Metro. Their work has not gone unnoticed, and this year, about two, I guess last week, in Chicago at the American Planning Association's National Meeting, Star Metro received the National Planning Excellence Award for Transportation. There is only one of these handed out each year, and it's handed out to a local, regional, or state transportation project that exhibits, that exemplifies good planning in transportation. This has been a very, very challenging, I would say, transition. We basically had to take a bus system that had been in place for years and years and completely reorganize it. It was almost as though a brand-new, a brand-new system was in place. Absolutely everybody who used the system was affected, the drivers, the management. But the planning didn't just start two years ago, the planning was going on as long ago as 2004, whenever I was in the, at the University of, excuse me, Florida State University Urban and Regional Planning Department. And so after many years of planning, of stakeholders groups, of evaluation, and then the big step came on July 11th, two years ago, 2011, and then there were, of course, a lot of bugs to work out. Everyone worked steadfastly, there was a tremendous amount of citizen volunteer involvement, not to mention the fact that every single member of the Star Metro staff was deeply involved. So this is an award recognizing how hard they worked, and I want to give you a big hand for everything that you did, because we couldn't just wait until a crisis occurred. We couldn't just wait until gas prices were so high that that was significantly affecting people's budgets, and they were looking around for an alternative way to get back and forth the work. This was timely, it was probably overdue, and it was a major effort. So they have been recognized for that, so it is today my pleasure to formally recognize the Star Metro staff, and our new director, Ivan Maldonado, and Brian Waterman, who's the chief planner at Star Metro. I'm going to hand them the award here, but the real award is absolutely beautiful, it weighs about 50 pounds, and they shipped it down to us, and we don't have it today, but it's a very beautiful award.
Major Marks, Commissioners, Madam Manager, all the leadership staff, and the citizens of Tallahassee. On behalf of Star Metro, I would like to thank all of you for the great support and guidance that you have provided us to help us receive this award. We did not do it alone, it took a lot of work from citizens, staff, many volunteers, great leadership from our Commissioners, our leadership staff, and we are very thankful for that. Surely the foundation for excellence in transit services has been laid during the decentralization of the system, but this is just the beginning. Our goal is not just to have the best transit system, but also one that meets the transportation needs of our citizens of Tallahassee and those visiting our city. So I really appreciate each and every one of you, our staff, our planning staff, each of our, the members that were involved. We definitely have a great team, and I'm very grateful, folks, for all the support and all the help that you have provided, and for the work that you do. Thank you so much.
While you're taking the pictures, let me just make a couple of comments. First of all, this new transition to this route system was, in some quarters of our community, was not well-received. However, the staff down at Star Metro believed in it, and I think the proof is the fact that now they've won this award. But the other thing I want to do is recognize the new director of our transit, of Star Metro.
Ivan.
Mr. Maldonado.
Good luck.
Well, it's for a little while, but now he's going to direct Star Metro for us, and we really welcome you aboard, and we look forward to working with you. Thanks, and all you, you got a good team already, so you can't help but look good over the years, okay? Thank you very much. All right, next item.
We are on item number eight, Mr. Mayor's Citizen Input on Agenda Items.
Any?
There are no speakers.
All right, next item.
We are on consent.
Mr. Mayor, before consent, just on announcements, if I could, I just wanted to let you know in the public, I have a board meeting tomorrow morning in Miami, so I'm going to be leaving a little early today. Hopefully I'll make it through the meeting, but I might have to leave early.
Oh, shucks.
To make it work.
I'll move consent.
Consider. Properly moved, and second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously, next item.
The next item is an introduction of ordinance, and the city attorney will introduce that item.
Commissioners, we're asking introduction tonight of ordinance number 13-0-17, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. And we will, at the same time, be scheduling a joint public hearing for May 28, 2013, before the city commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners, and that public hearing will be held in the county commission chambers. Would move the approval of the introduction.
That ordinance is introduced, next item.
The next item is item number 13.01, Approval of Joint City-City Agreement with the Oasis Center for Women and Girls for Administrative Support to the Tallahassee-Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and also consideration of appointments to the committee. And Commissioners, in September of 2010, Leon County created the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and last month, as you recall, you agreed to partner in the commission and approved $20,000 in funding. Today, we're seeking approval of a joint agreement between the city, Leon County, and the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, which provides administrative support for the commission. In addition, the report includes the names of individuals that you have individually indicated you would like to appoint to the commission, along with the name of two others for consideration, of a total of seven appointees to the commission. I believe you've gotten a couple of emails this week from Michelle Bono. She sent you an update on the county appointments that were just made, and I think this item is now in your hands for action.
Could we just, each commission has made an appointment, and maybe some of us don't know who the appointees are, and each commission who has made an appointment or suggested an appointment, could you just kind of let us know who they are, so we'll all know who they are?
They're on the, yeah.
We'll start at, oh, Jessica.
It's in the agenda.
Huh?
I haven't done that. Mr. Mayor, may I comment on the item?
This is, go ahead.
Thank you. One, I'd like to move approval of the recommended action, and two.
Second.
Thank you. Two, as this transition was happening, probably a number of us got outreach to by a lot of people, and I was one of them. A lot of people saying, will you support me? And I was thinking, yeah, sure, I'll support you, before realizing we only get to name one person, and the list of candidates that came through were just remarkable. Haley, you're going to have a fantastic group of people to work with on all sides of this, just looking at the resumes of folks. But there is one person in particular, and she's not on our list or on the last list, Ms. Elsie Crowell, who was very instrumental in the collection of data that went into the report this year. I know Haley has underscored the need to have working members of this committee, she exhibited herself as one of them, and so although she's not part of tonight's package, would just strongly urge her consideration for one of the remaining seven slots, given her previous work on the committee, and I know that's not a decision we will get to make, the committee jointly will get to make that, but want to throw my endorsement, not only behind the folks who recommended here, but also behind Elsie.
Why don't we, can we, is it appropriate to write some sort of a letter of endorsement for this individual from us to send to the committee?
I don't mind, or if you wanted to just personally outreach to the person you're nominating, because I think they'll be the ones who make the decision.
Okay. All right, I think, you know, as I look at this list, I think everybody knows, has a good idea who's on that list.
We have some of the members that are here this afternoon. Mr. Mayor, if you would like to have them stand.
All right, I'll have them. My appointee is Jessica Lowminer. Jessica? I don't see Mildred Hall, do I? No.
My appointee is Mildred Hall, but I'd also like Commissioners to introduce you to Jennifer Kolinsky, who I strongly recommend. Her time, and her energy, and her expertise, and her talent is well-known to me, and also her interest in this topic is very, very deep and longstanding, so I'd recommend her for, she's here down as one of the alternative, well, not alternates, but one of the extra two, and I'd like to ask for your consideration for her in that position.
Commissioner Gillum?
Is that me next? My nomination is for Ms. Julie Moreno, who is new to our community. She is the publisher of the Tallahassee Democrat, and has exhibited great interest in this subject matter, and I think will be an asset to the committee.
Commissioner Maddox?
My appointee was Paige Carter-Smith, who served as executive director of Florida Voice for Choice, executive director of the Florida Democratic Party, was a Golden Award winner in Girl Scouts, and served as chief of staff to the mayor in this government. And my suggestion for the overall appointee was County Court Judge Nina Ashenoffe.
Commissioner. Mine is somebody that I have a great deal of knowledge of, she's been living in Tallahassee for 40 years. Prior to my joining the commission, whenever we went anywhere, it was a matter of, oh, you're married to Gail Stansbury Ziffer. Her involvement in the community is very, very long and very deep, and her commitment to women's issues is even far greater. And so in my three and a half years here, it's been the first time I had the opportunity to ask her to serve on this, and she wholeheartedly accepted pending approval of this commission.
I didn't know that Gail was born here.
I didn't, I didn't give the background of Jessica Lowminer, she is currently executive director, I think it is, of the League of Women Voters, and I think she's working on a PhD that is very, very focused on this particular area as well, so that was the reason why I thought she would make an excellent appointee to the committee. We have a motion and a second to adopt the, to adopt this, to approve the joint city-city commission agreement, along with the slate of appointees. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, we look forward to your work, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Before you go, would you please stand, Robin Thompson? Robin is the current chair of the commission, and Haley Cutler is the executive director of the Oasis Center, which will be, they'll be supplying the support, and they were, between these two women here and their colleagues, produced that excellent report that we based our support on.
Thank you very much, thank you all very, very much, we look forward to your work. Okay, thank you. Next item.
The next item is 13.02, Presentation on the Change for Change Program. And Commissioners, I know that each of you are aware of the Change for Change Program, whereby city utility customers can make a monthly donation on their utility bill to help address homelessness. At the request of the Quality of Life Target Issue Committee, the city has launched a public awareness campaign in partnership with the community to increase participation in the Change for Change Program. In developing the campaign, staff learned that there are more than 550 children in Tallahassee that are homeless, making up 20% of our homeless population in the city. This campaign focuses on the needs of families and children with the goal of doubling the number of participants and the amount of annual contributions, participants meaning people who pay into the fund. Michelle Bono is here tonight to show you a video and tell you about the campaign.
Yes.
And what we learned from homeless children in our community about what they miss most about not having a home.
This is good, this is very good, thank you, Michelle. Go right ahead.
Mayor and city commissioners, city manager, and guests, occasionally we get to work on projects that really are close to your heart, and this has been one that has been really, really meaningful. As the city manager mentioned, when we worked with some of the agencies that provide homelessness services, and they talked about 550 children in this community that don't have a home, like many people we've talked to, our question was, that doesn't seem real, where are these kids? And one of the things we learned from interviewing children at the Hope Community is that they work very hard not to be seen as being homeless. The school system has told us in every one of our city schools, there are homeless children. For the younger children, they think that being at the Hope Community is somewhat of an adventure. Families go there for six months of very personalized care and assistance, with 80% of their, the people at the Hope Community moving into permanent housing. So we know there are solutions that work in this community, and we were really honored to get to take this assignment from the Quality of Life Target Issue Committee. I want to also recognize Commissioner Gillum, who was on this committee before it transitioned to this, now with Commissioner Ziffer and the mayor serving on this, but I wanted to share with you, we went out to the Hope Community, these are children in our community, I was again, I started to say younger children, because they think it's an adventure to be there, to have a playground and a place to stay and to be with other children. When you go to the Hope Community, the teenagers and the middle school kids don't want anyone to know. They, it's a shame of homelessness, and even the parents have talked about that people will react to you and say, oh, well, you must not want to work. And we've interviewed and talked with parents who have college degrees, and parents who want to be working and want to be back in a home environment, so I want to share with you what we heard from the children.
I miss eating dinner with my family in our own kitchen.
550 children in Tallahassee are missing the simple joys of being a kid.
I miss having my own bed.
I miss having my own couch.
550 kids missing the simple comfort of having a place to call home. Join the Change for Change Program by simply adding a monthly contribution to your city utility account. For the cost of just a gallon of milk, you can help all our kids enjoy the simple, extraordinary things about just being a kid.
Pretty powerful.
Very good.
The kids that touched us also were the older kids that said, and in front of each one of you, you have a comment on the card, we're using these cards to thank some of the folks helping us, and the comments on your cards are comments that the children shared with us at the Hope Community. I know Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, you commented earlier about the teenagers, mainly middle schoolers and high schools, high schoolers. I don't think we fully appreciate the number of kids that are in our schools that sit next to students that have homes. The one that I have says, when my friends talk about their mom not buying them a new shirt or iPhone case, I want to tell them, get real, I don't have a home, but I don't say anything, because they don't want people to know. And by contributing to this, and it's not much, you know, you can pick it, it's not a lot we're asking people to do on the utility bills, but that little bit can mean an awful lot. I think right now we're at 2% of our utility customers contribute, which is about $60,000. And I know we're making a big pushdown, we're only projecting a 2% increase to bring us to 4%. I got to tell you, I think this community is better than that. I think our people and our citizens and our utility ratepayers will kick in more than that. There are too many people that are suffering far greater than some of us think that, how much we're hurting, and so I would encourage anybody that's listening to me now, reads the newspaper, sees some of these, these are real kids that don't have a place to live, and so please, just when you get your utility bill, think about how little $2 a month, or $4, or whatever it is, what kind of difference that'll make.
And I want to share how simple it is, every utility customer who receives a copy of their bill in the mail, received this with their April utility bill, on the back, all you have to do is put your name, your address, your email, because we do confirm that indeed you wanted to sign up for this, so you get an email confirmation. It then shows up on your utility bill every month, change for change, the amount you indicated, and it is tax deductible, so you can take that off your taxes at the end of the year. The other thing that's important for people to know is that the city is only the conduit. It goes from us, the agencies, straight to the agencies, the folks that assisted in the past have been the Hope Community, also Second Harvest, and we asked, well, why Second Harvest? They said, when families have to make a decision between food and rent, they pick food, so if we can give them some food and allow them to pay their rent, they can stay in their home. The other agency that I know you're all familiar with is the Capital Area Community Action Agency, they do the same thing, assisting with pressing bills to allow people to stay in their homes and hopefully get back on their feet. So it's very simple, at the direction of the Quality of Life Target Issue Committee, we kicked it off last week, we've had a lot of business, citizen, church, and synagogue involvement, and we're going to every group that will let us get out there and have an army of other volunteers assisting. We talked to the school board last night, there will be emails sent to parents, there will be emails shared with customers. One of the things that, when people in the room say, well, what can I do to help, you all each got a nice stack of these.
Right.
Hand them to friends, because what we find is that people are touched by the program, but then they get busy and they don't make the time to fill out the card. You can go online to talgov.com, it took me about 20 seconds to put this in, and they immediately verify that you have been accepted. Since we launched this campaign last Thursday, we are now up to 94 participants, it's about $6,000, so we're a little over 10% of our way. It's about $6,000, so we're a little over 10% of our way towards our goal, which is to get to at least another 60,000. Commissioner, I know we'd like to get more than that. So we really want to try to engage people. Our media partners have been fantastic, our business partners. So we think there's a lot out there, and you're going to see, you may have seen as you came in, some of the cutout figures. On the back of each one of them, as you see on the table over here, are more flyers. We're going to have those in the malls. We're looking to take them to Tom Brown, where all the people are out playing baseball. Anything we can do to get the message out of how simple it is to donate a few dollars each month on the utility bill that goes to help families and individuals in our community to get back into homes, especially these kids.
Yeah, if I can add, and I wanted to thank Karen Moore for hosting our event, and her company has 100% participation, all their employees, because after seeing this, they all jumped in. And I want to add, and correct me if I'm wrong, if at some point you've made this commitment and at some point you choose not to, you can opt out.
Correct.
It's not difficult to do at all. And so, if now's a good time, I would urge you to do so. Challenge people in your office or where you work or your friends to step up and just do a little bit, because it's going to make a big difference.
I wanted to also introduce Carrie Poole. Carrie is our newest employee in the Communications Department. I have introduced her. People tell me I shouldn't do this as the new Bill Behenna, but you all know Bill was here for many years. Everyone says a nice...
What an improvement.
Okay, there we go. Carrie has been a great addition. Her first day on the job, we went and interviewed the children at the Hope Community. So she said, what a job, what a great opportunity. She's going to hand out to those in the audience today one of the forms, and we have a box at the back. All you have to do is check it off and fill it in. I also wanted to recognize our city utilities. They're doing a great job. Every new customer is going to receive an email saying, thank you for becoming a customer, and would you also like to sign up for Change for Change? Starting May 1st throughout the month of May, every call taker will ask citizens who call into utilities, would you like to join the Change for Change Program? So they're working aggressively with us to make sure. Every e-bill going out next month in the month of May, we'll have a promotion about that, and also hopefully a follow-up email to invite them to take part. So great assistance from our utility partners.
How often is the PSA planned and where? I'm just curious, and what, anything else?
Well, when you're low budget, it is definitely a PSA, which means that we're begging for our media partners to assist us. We have had Comcast already step up to the plate and volunteer over $5,000 worth of programming on Comcast and public service announcements. Channel 6, Channel 27 have both received copies and agreed to share it. Several of the radio networks, groupings have also agreed to air, we've given them an audio portion. So we've had great support from the media, and we think really the icing on the cake is the personal ask, and we're really trying to work that, also with Rotary Clubs and civic clubs as well.
I mean, there are two other comments I'd like to make. First of all, this fits hand in hand with what we have been trying to do in the homeless community. I guess a couple of weeks ago, when we had our meeting, I asked Susan Porshoye, how do we really address this homelessness issue? And what is the best way? Because obviously, we've been trying for the last 10 years or so to really make a dent. We have made some progress, and we have made a lot of progress, as a matter of fact, but not as much as we all would like to. And her response was a very simple one. I said, what is the answer? She said, permanent housing or housing transition. And so, this will fit that very, very well, especially when you consider the 550 kids are not out there roaming the streets. They're not. They're in homes with parents that are homeless, and that's where we get that count from. So if we can focus our attention, as far as homelessness is concerned, on housing, which is where we should, this really is a very, very good program. The other point, Michelle, I had a phone call today with the Executive Director of the National League of Cities. That phone call, they told me that they have monies for medical care or medical help for children, and they have a program that they can provide funds or resources for that. So please, while I'm thinking about it, because I might forget, get with them in my office with Brad, and he'll, we'll put that together. Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, I just wanted to put a little perspective on this, and the ask on the back of the card is $2, $3, or $5, and that's only $24 a year, spread out over, even if it's $5 donation, that's $60 a year, spread out over a monthly, you know, $5, which is really painless to everyone. And then I also wanted to share with everyone that I've learned that it's very easy to get on this internally, I shouldn't say this to the entire public, by just calling Reese Code and asking him to put you on, and he'll put you on. You don't have to fill a thing out. So, good luck.
Commissioner Gillum.
I expect to see everybody on the list.
Commissioner Gillum.
Yeah, Michelle, thank you to you and your team for this revved-up effort, and Commissioner Ziffer, and to the Mayor for going out and meeting with the public, you know, to expand awareness on this. I thought that the press conference you all held, particularly the young woman, and her name doesn't...
Wendy.
Ms. Rodriguez, who, you know, told the story of how she was employed and then lost her job, and she had two kids in the IB program at Rickards. And when her savings ran out, she had to leave from staying at hotels and was fortunate enough to get a spot in the Hope Community. And, you know, of course, my mind immediately went to these kids who were showing up every day for this rigorous program and IB. And frankly, it didn't have to be IB. Kids showing up every day, having, you know, under the expectation that they're prepared to learn, they were well-rested, well-fed, with little to no distraction other than having to worry about making their grades, and that her family was able to persevere through that. And it, you know, it sort of shakes the mind, because a lot of us make up in our mind excuses around why people fall into homelessness. And this wasn't a person who was doing anything wrong. She was doing exactly what was expected. And a bad economy hit and fell on bad times, and she found herself without shelter for her and her kids. And so, strong endorser of this program, my colleague, Commissioner Katz, and I were original members of this committee when we considered this. I only mention him because he's in town, and I know he's watching us, not...
He's going to stop by.
You were right, exactly. But a shout-out to him and also to the team, now defunct team, which I think is now known as sort of our area ministerial alliance, who strongly organized for this effort and pushed for it and wanted us to consider it an opt-out program. And I have to tell you, I agree that our community is so much bigger than 2% or 4%. And I think if people just knew, you know, they'd be more than willing to be selfless and contribute, you know, $1, $2, or $3 a month toward this effort. So, you know, that idea is also not lost on me. I think we should give this everything we've got and then consider what our options are after that. But thank you for your work on this.
Great stuff. This is just information, right? Okay, next item.
The next item is 13.03, Approval of Amendment to Master Sewer Plan to Include Additional Unsewered Areas in Unincorporated Leon County. Commissioners, this item is seeking your approval of an amendment to the city's master sewer plan. In February of 2010, the Commission approved the 20-year master plan, which in addition to other components, included an evaluation for servicing unsewered areas within unincorporated Leon County. As required by the City-City Water and Sewer Agreement, the approved plan was sent to Leon County for review and approval. The County Commission approved the plan contingent upon it being amended to include additional unsewored areas in the county. There is no fiscal impact to the city to include these areas in the master plan. The original plan approved by the Commission reflected an infrastructure investment plan of approximately $28 million over the 20-year planning period. I see that Blast is here, and I also see that John is here, and I was told that John had to go to another meeting.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Commissioner Maddox is not here, but it still passes unanimously. Go ahead. Next item.
All right. 13.04 is a discussion of a two-year extension to option agreement for sale and purchase with the McKibben Hotel Group. And Commissioners, in 2008, the city entered into a series of agreements with McKibben Group, the hotel group, for the development of the Florida Block on the southwest corner of Monroe and Tennessee Streets. Included in this action was a three-year option agreement to allow MHG to purchase the .63-acre corner parcel, which is identified as parcel A in your agenda materials, for construction of an office building. In 2011, the city granted a two-year extension to this option agreement. MHG has requested an additional two-year extension at this time to carry the option agreement to April 30th of 2015. Staff is recommending the additional two-year extension with certain terms and conditions. I think you've been briefed on this item, and Michael Parker can provide a short overview of the recommended terms and conditions for the extension and to answer any questions.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Question.
There's a question, too. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, could you, if you don't mind, just going over into the public record what the moderated criteria are and whether or not there are any additional payments expected to the city for the continued reservation of this land?
Well, I'm glad you have the opportunity, because there's one modification to the terms that are in your agenda item that I want to discuss, and that is, what we're proposing was the $130,000... Take a step back. The, just for purposes, you understand that the agreed-upon option agreement would have them purchasing the property for $1.3 million. What we're, they have put down a $130,000 deposit. Subsequent to us sending this agenda out, and they contacted us and asked us to reconsider whether we could allow that $130,000 deposit to be applied toward the purchase price. If they, with the agreement that if they did not, then it would be forfeit during the term of the agreement, staff are prepared to recommend that or add that to their recommendation. That's the only change to what you see in your agenda item, where we said that it would not be carried over. The second condition is, is that they will continue to have to lease from the city the parking spaces or pay lease payments on the parking spaces on parcel A that they are currently using until such time as they close on the property the option agreement expires. And thirdly, that the option agreement will contain milestones that will identify steps they have to take, that we can track to show that they are in fact taking due diligence during this two-year period to move forward so that they can close on the property.
So the initial $130 that was paid on this site, I sort of received that as a reservation on the land. How did you all consider applying that $130? I'm not sure why we would carry that anymore forward beyond the five years that we've already had on it.
Well, it's, the $130 was based on 10% of the purchase price. And so, they have suggested or requested that we consider that, that the value of the property has not changed substantially since the time that they made, the $1.3 million that was originally set, price was set. And I've confirmed that with our real estate folks, that that's still a fair price. So they're asking that if they were able, if they were to, if they closed, that we would allow that $130, which they have already paid to the city, be credited against the purchase price.
So the updated appraisal puts the value of the land at what?
Well, we haven't done a new appraisal, but based on the most recent transactions, and I talked with Mark Bedoin, the price that we're talking about per square foot on this, at the .63 acres at $1.3 million, is still a fair market price. The appraisal on this was done in 2006. Property values were probably reaching their highest point in the downtown and then depreciated and now moving back up again. So that's still considered based on recent transactions to be a fair market price.
Despite the new development that's going on catty-corner to this lot?
Yes, sir.
So I would be prepared to support the motion without this change to it and reserve the opportunity to negotiate that at a later, you know, at a later point. And I assume the motion that's made didn't include this application of the $130 toward the purchase anyway. It was just continuing the reservation of the land for two more years.
No, the recommendation did include, what was the recommendation related to the $130?
Not the one on the item, not the one on this agenda.
Well, I modified, subsequent to that, our staff's modification of the recommendation would be to allow the $130 to be retained, a non-refundable deposit which could be used for, against the purchase price if they close within the extended option period.
And it's, right now, what you have in the agenda item is silent on that issue. It doesn't say one way or another.
Actually, what it says, right, our original recommendation was that that money would not be carried forward and allowed to be applied towards the extension of the option agreement.
So can you explain why you had that position originally?
We met when we met with the property owners. Our original intent was that the five years had expired, and so that the good faith money would be forfeited. The property, since then, they have come and talked to us, and they, our primary motive behind this is to get the property developed.
Sure.
And so, they have indicated to us that they believe that if we don't allow them to apply this towards the purchase price, we're essentially increasing the purchase price by 10%. So if they were, if we allow them to use the $130,000 deposit, and if they purchase the property, then we will receive the original $1.3 million that we agreed upon. If they do not close within the two-year period, it is a non, then we retain the $130,000.
So we, I mean, I guess my consideration on this is that we have now taken this off anyone's ability to bid for this particular parcel, which is now cleared, that we have a future transportation project on, so on and so forth. There's a new development that is occurring catty-corner to this, which, I'm not a real estate person, but I would assume will impact the value of the land that is around it. Are we going to readjust this $1.3 million up if the value of the land increases in two years, or is it the recommendation that we allow that to stay static as well?
If this option agreement that we've agreed upon, the $1.3 million purchase price, irregardless of the $130,000 if we extend this agreement. Now, I will tell you that one of the milestones that we are looking in here will not allow the property owner to basically do nothing on the property for the next two years. And one of the things that they have discussed with us is the idea of looking at alternative uses for the property. The original approved UPUD for that property calls for the construction of a 90,000-square-foot office building, which they have indicated, and we believe is correct, is would be extremely difficult to finance in the current market. So if they are going to look at an alternative use on the property, that would require an amendment to the PUD, and that would have to come back to you as a body to approve. If they were going to do that, then they will have to, one of the milestones that we're proposing to put in here would be, they would have to have filed for that amendment to the PUD within 90 days of this transaction. If they don't want to amend the PUD but want to pursue the existing 90,000-square-foot office building, within approximately nine months, they would have to have submitted the building plans to the city for that structure. So what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting to you is they will not be able to sit static for the entire two-year period. There are performance measures that they will have to do along. If they don't meet any of those milestones, then the option agreement will terminate at that point.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Okay, so let me propose something that might be acceptable to a compromise. Nine months is a benchmark time period, correct, that is in what we're potentially going to approve. So if I could suggest that within nine months, at that nine-month anniversary from now, if they have not, and what was the milestone for again? I apologize.
If they are seeking an alternative use that would require an amendment to the PUD, then they would have to apply for that within 90 days of the approval of this extension.
Okay, so I'm willing to go the two years on the extension for the $1.3 million price, but at nine months, if they have not met that benchmark, the $130,000 stays with the city, which effectively increases the cost of the land to 14.3, correct? Excuse me, 1 point...
1 point, right.
So is that acceptable?
It is acceptable. I do want to clarify, though, in nine months, they could choose that they don't have an alternative plan on the land, and then what happens?
Well, then they would have to be pursuing, showing that they're making, that they are actually have plans in the process to build the original approved construction on the site, which is the 90,000-square-foot office building.
And what does that look like? I mean, my big consideration is here is that we have a corridor, a critical corridor that right now is under redevelopment. We have taken this off for consideration for any of a potential development for three years, and then we did an extension for two, and now you're requesting another extension of two, and by the way, let the initial amount that we put into abeyance in the initial three, you know, three-year request be applied to the initial, you know, the ultimate purchase without an updated assessment on the value of the land, so on and so forth, which to me sounds really weird. And so, I'm wondering, what are we asking to be demonstrated between this point? Nine months happens, and there is no intended change in the future plans?
Then they would have to have submitted their, initiated the plan approval process, submitted their plans, so that they could get their building permits.
So in nine months, an action one way or another will have to be demonstrated.
Yes, in fact, assuming that they, and that's the assumption, is that they are looking for no change in the use.
In use, right.
If they were looking for a change in the use, then they would need to submit an application, because they have to go through the PUD process, within 90 days of this.
Then I, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Ziffer, then my, you know, I think our compromise position would be in 90 days for us to make the determination on that $130.
I'm okay with that.
Give me, explain again to us, yeah, what you just said.
Let me make sure that I understand. What we're saying is, if there is no action to initiate a PUD change in 90 days, then we would do what?
Well, 90 days is the marker of either for a PUD change or making... Well, 90 days is the marker of either for a PUD change or making progress under their intended plan. And I think at that time, that would give us hopefully sufficient enough consideration that they're actually making movement on this site. And then we would consider whether or not we would attribute that 130,000 dollars.
So, you will make a decision at that point in time?
Yeah, I just think it would be more prudent, frankly, at that time, at that point of demonstrated movement, rather than part blunt at this point.
What, what happens in nine months? I'm missing, did I, was that not on there?
I think it was the 90 days.
It's 90 days, we're talking about 90, it's not nine months.
And just so I clarify, the 90 days is based on the assumption that there's a change in use.
Right.
They're going to, to do. And, and I believe that is, that is the, the way they're going to pursue.
Right.
If they were not to pursue a change in use, then they would not have to do an amendment to the PUD, in which case, it would be reasonable to give them a longer period of time to get their building plans put together and submitted. And that was the nine months.
But then, I'm, I'm even consistent with the nine months. I mean, if that gives them maximum leeway for movement, but I, I just don't think we should, at this point, say, you know, here you go.
You don't want to make any decision on the 130 until we know what they're doing.
But to agree to the two-year extension with the benchmarks that are in the, that are in the item, I believe that is the spirit of the motion.
Okay.
Does that cause any problems?
No, ma'am, I think that's consistent with, I mean, essentially, we were going to basically say that if you didn't meet the milestone, then the option agreement terminated. We kept the, we kept the deposit. And so, I mean, our intent was is to make these milestones, and the developers agreed to this, that these are, these are required steps. And if you do not meet them, then, then you are not meeting the terms of the option, option agreement.
Commissioner?
So, it sounds like none, there's not a lot of support for the 130,000 dollars being applied to the purchase price. The question is that whether that is allowed to go forward when we do act on this.
The city, the city attorney has indicated that he thinks we have everything in place that we need in order to enact the recommendation as just discussed.
Okay, all right, good. Just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Well, let me, this one, this, this troubled me from the very beginning, this extension because of what you said Commissioner, we did five years, then we did two, now we're doing two more.
We did three, three and two and two.
Yeah, and now, now it's another extension. What really troubles me is the, the comment, what troubles me is the comment of a potential for a new hotel on that site. I mean, I'm not a hotelier, I'm not a evaluation, a person that can evaluate the best and highest use of property, but that seems to be intuitively, that seems to be not a good idea. You're going to build it next to the Aloft, and you're going to put another hotel. And then on top of it, I don't know if this would be the case, what the quality of the hotel is going to be put on that corner. That troubles me. And see, what we have now is that if they want to change the PUD, they're going to, it appears that they'll change the PUD for a hotel. I don't know if they're going to do that or not, but that's what it appears they're going to do. In 90 days, we're going to get a request to change the PUD to a hotel. And I, I would, I have to say upfront, that does not sit well with me, okay? That is a signature corner in, in this community. And we need to think, what is the highest and best use of that signature corner? And maybe a hotel is there, maybe that is a hotel. But I, it troubles me that we would put two hotels right next to each other. And that's what this amounts to. And we got the other hotel down there. I don't know how that affects the market or whatever the situation might be. But I'm willing to go along with the extension with the understanding that, you know, that PUD.
Comes back before you.
Come, I know it comes back before us, and I will have additional comments at that point in time, depending on what the change to the PUD is. Commissioner Miller?
Michael, could you elaborate on the parking situation and what an eventual movement forward on the part of the McKibben group would mean to us and in terms of parking?
Yes, ma'am. And just briefly, when this, originally when this package was all put together back in 2008, when the office building was to be purchased, part of that, in order for that parcel to be developed, we will need to be put, a parking structure will need to be placed on the surface parking lot, which is owned by the CRA immediately behind the Aloft Hotel. So, part of the entire development package will be, for the development of that site, will be come, have to come back to the CRA for how their participation would be in helping build a parking structure on that site. So, right now, under our current lease agreement, we're, we provide, we're required to provide 128 parking spaces to the Aloft Hotel. There's 103 parking spaces currently on that parking space, on that, that flat parcel. So, if we were, if we were to put another use on the parcel A, we would have to come, basically come up with another 25 parking spaces approximately on that existing part, on that existing surface parking lot. Reality is, is whatever development goes on that corner is going to need parking as well.
Right.
And the assumption is, is that whomever we're developing or we're working with on that, that they will be part of the negotiations, and they will be leasing parking from the CRA as the Aloft Hotel is right now. And that'll all be part of the funding scenario that would go into actually financing the construction of a parking structure.
Commissioner Gillum?
Yeah, when, when this does come back, if there is a proposed change, you know, I would suggest bringing back where some of those original agreements were between us that really spurred some of the incentive around this development. I remember this sort of the conversation like it was yesterday around not trying to incentivize stuff that was going to naturally happen. One of the things that was appealing about this when it initially came through was the facade sort of being a little bit of a monument, not a monument, but certainly a replica of the old Floridian building. The piece that faced the intersection was, you know, very attractive. I mean, there were, there were pieces of this that made it seem very different in signature for the location.
Right.
If we are now backing away from that, then I think it's our obligation to remind ourselves of what was part, and even on the transportation piece, there was a Star Metro, huge, you know, redesign of that, of that area that included parking and the bus port and the, you know, I think there was some federal money or something that we were attempting to go after or was involved. Actually, I think it still is involved in that land. We have federal money on that.
Actually, what happened behind you is, is that there was, there was, federal funds were used to purchase that property. And originally, we were trying to do a design that would allow the ground floor to be used for buses. It just strictly, it really wouldn't work. But the, the concern at that point was, is that if we didn't use that for a transportation purpose, the funds that we were provided to acquire would have to be returned. So, what the compromise was, we were able to work as FD, the Department of Transportation at the federal level agreed that if the fair market value of that property was returned to Star Metro, they could reinvest that money into other uses. So, the CRA purchased that parcel for 2.1 million dollars. And then that money went to Star Metro, and they've been used, they used that to acquire a number of the satellite sites for theirs. So, the design for the, for the parking structure, that it was adopted as part of the PUD, does not include any multimodal functions in it. Now, you may be correct in that part of the overall plan for the downtown shows some additional development on CK Steel. That wasn't really part of this PUD. But as this project evolved, the only way to make this work was, we, the CRA purchased the property, Star Metro used that, those funds to reinvest them in the rest of the, the, the transportation plan for their satellite sites. And the parking structure that's being designed, which you will see, when you see the approved PUD, it's a four, I think it's a four-story parking structure. It's strictly for parking with some interactive uses on the ground floor.
I, I, I think you got a sense of where we are on this particular matter. I think you got a sense of where.
It seems to me we're going to have several opportunities ahead of us.
You will.
To make more decisions, so.
Yep. Yep, I agree. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is 13.05, Approval of the 2013 Transit Development Plan, Minor Updates. Commissioner Star Metro's Transit Development Plan is a federally required 10-year planning document that provides the overall guidance for transit in Tallahassee. A major update is produced every five years with a status report on the progress of goals and objectives from the TPD, TDP, submitted to Florida Department of Transportation each year between. The last Star Metro major update to the TDP was in 2011. So, what you have before you now is a minor update. Ivan Maldonado is here, and Brian Waterman is also here to provide a brief presentation to you on the minor changes that are being made.
Go right ahead, Mr. Maldonado.
Brian Waterman is going to actually do the presentation. Please, Brian, come on.
Right.
Again, good afternoon, Brian Waterman, Transit Planning Manager, Star Metro. This is the annual update to the Transit Development Plan. Briefly, as a city manager, an update on it is a federal and state requirement. We do a TDP every five years. This is the interim minor update. We have to annually, we have to do this in order to get our federal, our state block grant funds. The approval now, we'll come back, we'll do another approval in June for the block grant, and then August is one package to FDOT for their release of the block grant funds in September.
Let me ask a question on that. This, is this part of CDBG funding or not?
This is DOT block grant funds, all the state transportation program.
And it goes to the state and then comes to us?
Then comes to us as part of our requirements.
But it goes through the state?
Yes.
DOT.
Yes. And the project we identify in our TDP both make it to the local, our, our local priorities. It also goes on to the STRTPA Regional Mobility Plan and to the State Transportation Improvement Program. So, if we ever decide to do new service or new expansion areas, if we want any sort of federal or state funding, these projects must be identified in our Transit Development Plan.
Let me ask one other question. When it goes to the state, Ken, and the federal government's going to give some block money to the state for this, right?
They give us a block grant which comes to us for operating assistance, that general operating assistance, this year's about 1.2 million dollars.
But it's a block grant that goes to the, to the state of 1.2 million for whatever?
Yes, it's a larger amount that goes to the state that's divvied amongst, amongst the various districts, and from the districts it comes to us. But yes.
What I'm trying to figure out is, the amount that comes to us, is it designated at the federal level, or is it, can it be changed at the state level?
It's designated at the state level. It's, it's formula funds based off our ridership, based off our mileage. It's large, it's a lot of calculations that go into it. It's just allocated based off the size of our agency. It's not something we can lobby to ask for a more or less amount. It's dependent on how we operate and how big we are. It's a formula fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Again, this is just an update from the last year where we talk about projects we've added, deleted, or progressed on what we've done so far. And we also include a Fairbox cover ratio, and for the record, our Fairbox cover ratio is one of the best in the state at 30%. The typical average Fairbox cover ratio is about 15 to 20%. So, we are doing really good, and largely attributed to our partnerships with FSU, FAMU, and TCC, and the good ridership we do have. Completed or in progress, the alternatives analysis, we talked about the state target issue. We've come back possibly next month to move forward on the alternatives analysis that consultant has been selected. Of course, we have, back in December, the city commission acted, no, see, back in November, the city commission acted to accept the grant to extend our service later into the evening. We have done that as well. We've also acquired the electric buses, and they'll, they'll kick it, kick off this summer. As for, and we also are in the process of installing very large fans at CK Steel Plaza, it's part of the rehab there, which will help lower the ambient temperature and make the way a much more pleasant experience in the heat of summer. As for additions and deletions, we have added single prioritization to 2018. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, we, there's a desire to upgrade our current traffic operation system from the IR infrared-based opticon system to a GPS-based system. As part of the, going to a GPS-based system, we can add single prioritization to our buses. So, in the event that a bus is operating, is behind schedule, the green times or the red times at lights can be changed to bring the bus back on schedule. We are partnering with Public Works Fire Department, like to do that. That is scheduled for 2018 due to the current capital budget for the, for the city. And we've also deleted a park and ride facility from our project list. A little brief history on that. A couple of years ago, when we did the TDP, we had a proposal to do a park and ride lot in Midway in support of the Gadsden Express. We had some money set aside to do that, but that kind of fell through. We were unable to get the land we wanted, and FDOT was not willing to give up the right of way on US 90, so that project has been removed from the list. And that is pretty much it. Any other questions?
Much. Okay, questions, comments? I guess we have to take action.
You have to approve it.
You have to approve it.
Move approval.
Second. There's been a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, before we go to un-adjourned speakers, I would like to ask Raul Lavin to come up and make a quick presentation that he'd like to make. He didn't know I was going to say it this way, but he knew, he knew it was coming.
Oh, he knew it was coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Just wanted to let you know that today is Kathy Davis's last city commission meeting. She is retiring after 25-plus years with the city and moving down to the Orlando area. So, today's her last meeting, and actually Tuesday is her last day with the city. And we will be having a reception for her here at City Hall at 2 o'clock on Tuesday.
Where's Kathy? Is she here?
She is. Stand up Kathy, so we can.
Okay. She came by my, she came by my office today and didn't say a word.
Didn't know at all.
Mayor? Back in four years, watch.
Some of you may recall that Kathy's husband, Sam Davis, was the director of our gas utility. And Sam moved on, how many years ago Kathy? Five years ago, to Central Florida, where he's the director of the Apopka Utility there. They have been in route Kathy going every week or every other week, driving back and forth. And she has told us about three different times that she was going to retire because she could and, and make that move. And it's, we look up and it's been five years. And so, she actually is going to make that move now.
We'll, we'll, we'll let that one go Kathy, for that reason. That's a great reason to retire. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Commissioner?
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, what, what was going on? But your motivations are clearer to me now. I completely understand. Well, just a, a quick salute to you Kathy, who has helped this commission engineer some of its ideas around local hiring practices. Kathy's been very nimble, particularly during the tough economy that we've been through with, really trying to take our vision at the commission level of, of, of really getting deep in this hiring local, and has created public policy that I think helps to stand this test of legal push, and also represent the, the deep interests of this commission. And so, and so much more. But just want to say you are way too young to retire, but we will absolutely miss you here. Thank you for your work.
Thank you Kathy.
Thank you. Next item.
We are on un-adjourned speakers.
Are there any?
There is one speaker, Mayor, Erwin Jackson. He's the only speaker. I think he knows the rules. I may have a second.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, City Manager, a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Maddox tried to convince the public that information I have shared with the commission about John Marks was simply not true. I was also accused of crying wolf, quote unquote, and that no one was listening. This commission has for too long continued to support John Marks by remaining silent in the face of overwhelming evidence regarding his self-serving actions. The Florida Bar is listening. The Florida Bar informed me on April 10th, 2013, that after months of monitoring Mr. Marks, a formal investigation has now begun. The letter I've just passed out to you, I'd like to have placed into our public record. I would ask the city clerk to certainly follow up with that. Mr. Marks, can you share with the public why the Florida Bar has opened this investigation? It seems you will have another opportunity to explain to the public why your statements to the judge during your ethics trial do not agree with the written documents or your public statements. Justice moves slowly. However, eight members of the Florida Ethics Commission did not believe Mr. Marks when he stated he was unaware that Honeywell was a client of his law firm. Judge Stevenson ignored a signed document by Mr. Marks where he admitted that Honeywell was a client of his law firm. Instead, the judge simply chose to believe Mr. Marks' verbal testimony. Mr. Marks, at our last commission meeting, you asked if I thought you had perjured yourself during your ethics trial. I know that you lied to the public or Judge Stevenson or both regarding your relationship with Honeywell. It seems that the Florida Bar has questions regarding the accuracy of some of your statements. Therefore, I would suggest you ask them whether you crossed the legal threshold for perjury. In closing, I do not believe an incumbent mayor has ever been investigated by the Florida Bar. It is truly disappointing that our local newspaper does not recognize this unfortunate action as newsworthy. Maybe they're right. The Florida Ethics Commission investigated our mayor, now the Florida Bar. our mayor, now the Florida Bar, and we continue to wait for the FBI to complete its work. So what else is new? Thank you very much.
You know, I actually, Ken...
I just wanted to point out, my wife and I are going to be emcees this Friday night at Clement Plaza. It's a fundraiser...
Go right ahead, Mr. Marks. I'd love to hear your question.
I would love for you to sit down, please.
Oh, I thought you said you had a question for me.
Come on, sit down.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hope Community, fundraiser for Hope Community. We discussed earlier today the, the need to support our Change for Change program in our utility to help a lot of our homeless children, and the Hope Community is a big part of serving the needs of the homeless community. So I would urge anyone that could come to the Fish Fry Friday night, please do so. Hopefully, we'll entertain you to some degree and raise some money and do good things. Thank you.
I know if Gil's...
The great emcees.
So...
Mr. Mayor.
We do have one other speaker.
I only have one speaker at the time, but I do have a second speaker.
Okay. We do have a second speaker. You know, you know, it's, it really is tempting to respond to Erwin Jackson, but it makes no difference. So I won't. You know, I won't. But he said nothing new at all. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ed Hallifield, and that's the only remaining speaker unless someone else brings me a form.
Ed Hallifield, 4032, Longleaf Court. Since I only have three minutes, I'm gonna present the end of my speech first to make sure that it gets in. At first, I'd like to thank Nancy Miller, who sent me a very thoughtful note praising my work in the community. I might add, I went into a state of shock because no politician has ever presented me with a thoughtful note. What I'm here to speak about is something that's very important, hopefully to everybody. But on December 3, 2004, I sent a letter to the Tallahassee Democrat indicating that black infants in Leon County died at a rate of 53% higher than the state average. Unfortunately, that situation has continued. We've had some lip service to the, to the problem. The county started something called the Hair Board, Health Advisory Board, which is now defunct. 2010 was astounding. That is, black babies in Leon County died at a rate of six times white babies. 18.3 for blacks, 3.1 for white, per thousand, per thousand live babies. What should be done? Well, people tend to throw up their hands and say, this is too complex. We can't really do anything about this. And on a certain level, that's true. On a certain level, it's not true. There are some very simple things that could be done. And one would be to institute, in a serious fashion, breastfeeding. And that is not taking place in Leon County, unfortunately. There are a number of benefits. I'll start off with the reduction of the incidence of sudden infant deaths. Now, it has been demonstrated that breastfeeding can actually reduce that. In Leon County, black babies die from SIDS, sudden infant death, 3.7 times the rate of white babies. In regard to breastfeeding, exclusive breastfeeding for six months, that's been signed off by the Surgeon General. It's been signed off by the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Excuse me, your three minutes has expired?
It's expired already. I asked for a one-minute extension. I think this is important.
You too. Could you...
Go ahead, Doctor.
Okay, the problem is this. Tallahassee Memorial continues to provide infant formula to mothers prior to discharge. That's a violation of the WHO Code. It's a violation of UNICEF. That practice could come to an end immediately. We have talked to, I've talked to Michael Bryan about doing that. He could do it with a stroke of a, stroke of a pen. When the infant formula companies parade their wares throughout the hospital, and when those discharge bags contain infant formula, it's a deterrent to breastfeeding. So much so that if you look at the WIC Center on the south side of town, only 6.5% of the babies are breastfeeding at six months, which is really the standard. I appreciate the extension of time, but I also submit that this is very, is, very serious business, and I would try to convince the city of Tallahassee to adopt baby-friendly with this focus on breastfeeding for the entire city of Tallahassee. That could be done. It would require TMH to push breastfeeding. It would require Capitol Regional to push breastfeeding, and there's at least a possibility that that would bring about significant change in these abhorrent rates of black infant mortality that we see in Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hallifield.
You know, Dr. Hallifield brings up, obviously, a point he's been addressing for a number of years in terms of infant mortality in this community. I wonder if this is a topic that we just approved the status of women? Would this be an appropriate topic for them to address? I, I don't know. I don't know, would this be some topic that they can address? And if they could, if it is, Dr. Hallifield, we just appointed some individuals to a commission on the status of women here in the city of Tallahassee. It would appear to me that if they were, if they could take up this particular issue, it would probably have a lot more, it would have some weight, I won't say a lot more weight, than what you're suggesting we do. And I don't know whether or not this is a topic that they would want to address, but it involves women. I think breastfeeding involves women, and this may be something that they could, look, take a look at.
And I would like to add that, actually, I started a parent-child organization in Monroe, Louisiana, whenever I was having my children with two or three other people, and we did a lot of, a lot of education for people and encouraged people to nurse their children, explain the advantages, that kind of thing. And I don't know that we have anything like that here. I'm not working on that type of issue anymore, but that's something that was of interest to me now that you bring that up. The other thing, though, is that good prenatal care is extremely, extremely important for women, and as the budget for Healthy Start has been cut, they've had to cut back on the programming that they have. That, that is something that has disturbed me as I've seen it happen. I don't know what we can do because they are part of CHSP, but other than to, I am fully aware that they are cutting back and that we don't have as much emphasis on, on good prenatal care or availability either in this community. So we'll have to discuss among the staff what we can do to address those things.
Let me, let me comment a little bit further. I, I like what Dr. Hallifield is saying because my impression in the past, we took kind of a shotgun approach. We tried a lot of different things and, and many different things in prenatal care, and I don't want those to fall by the wayside. But what I think Dr. Hallifield is suggesting that, this is one thing that's easy to implement in our community, and it gets results. That's what I hear him saying, and this is a focused kind of approach to this problem, rather than, okay, prenatal care, and talk to the doctors, and doing all that. I think that's what he's saying, and if that is the case, I think it makes, to me, it makes a lot of sense. That is not to say that we neglect the other things that can address this, but let's put some emphasis on this particular matter, and it could make a difference in those numbers. That's all I'm saying. I think that's what Dr. Hallifield is saying, and I, I have to agree with that. Okay, all right. With that, we're on sharing of ideas. Commissioner?
Sharing of ideas. Well, one on Dr. Hallifield's point. This issue does seem so big, and it's often difficult to pin down what the substantial contributors are, and it seems like he's taken the right approach by talking to the hospital. I mean, we don't come across many babies through the services we provide directly from the city, but the hospitals come across practically all of them. And so if, if there's some sympathy toward this issue toward the, at the hospital level, I mean, I think that's incredibly powerful. Mayor, I also like your suggestion around seeing whether or not this is something the Commission on, on women's and girls might be interested in picking up on. Quick switching of gears, I was approached by a, a private roof builder who had asked the question about why it is that, I guess, the county allows roofers to work over the course of the weekend by signing an affidavit that they will follow the building practices, so on and so forth. And his point was, a lot of roofers would love to work over the weekends in the city, but apparently our code folks don't go out over the weekends, and so they would, or we have a prohibition on that or something along those lines. So I bring that up only to see if we can explore that question. Manager, I meant to bring it up to you earlier today, but it just hit me again while we were sitting here. I don't know what the dynamics are around that, if it's restricted to the roofing folks, or if this is something more broader about.
I'm not aware that we have any. Jake, can you respond to that in terms of weekend? We've been doing weekend inspections for, since 1994?
I had a comment by a builder that was similar, so there's something...
Something is...
Something there, but this was, this was a roofer.
But it has something to do specifically, probably Leon County just initiated a process where they are doing weekend inspections.
And maybe, maybe he got it wrong. He did say, the county has been doing it for a long time.
No, the county just started doing it. We have been doing it for a long time. Will you, will you elucidate it?
And that is correct, Madam Manager. We actually have had a program, I think, since, it is 1994, and we've adjusted the fee for that program over the years. I think the last fee adjustment was in 2004, if I recall correctly. We actually, our program is such that you actually have to call ahead to, to, to reserve an inspector to come on the weekend if you so desire them. So ours is a little bit different than the county's because ours is on-call. So you can do an on-call and have somebody actually come to your place of business or your residence or whatnot on the weekends, but the county just implemented. Before, they had a program where they, basically, they signed an affidavit that went with the permit because they didn't have, my understanding, they didn't have enough inspectors actually come and catch all the roofs.
So I think that's, I think that's the, the difference, that apparently they have an affidavit which allows work to continue over the weekend, and ours is you request an inspector over the weekends. And I'm trying to understand why the difference. What's the difference?
That was their program before.
So now they...
Now they have a, now they have an on-call program where you can call a number after hours on the weekends, and an inspector would come to you.
So no more do you sign an affidavit to continue work over the weekend. You now request an inspector for the weekend?
Correct. It's an on-call inspector. Our program is, we don't have an on-call inspector. You actually have to reserve that inspector. You have to call, you have to make that appointment during the week, and there's a fee associated with that.
I guess what I'm not, not clear on is whether there is a difference between signing an affidavit and continuing work over the weekend versus reserving an inspector who comes on-site over the weekend. So, and you don't have to clear, we can, we can sort of get to the bottom of it afterwards, but I wanted to bring it up as...
Would love to.
Commissioner, if you'd let us know who the person is, maybe we can contact them and see what the exact issue is. It sounds like there's something out there.
I got, I got one kind of a pet peeve that I observe quite a bit, and it's with leaf blowers. Leaf blowers. They blow the leaves into the street, from the grass into the street. It gets into the water system, and I don't think that's a good idea. And I don't know whether or not we have a way to present, prevent those gardeners and even homeowners from blowing the leaves, and they get into the drain, and it just really, in my opinion, is not something that we should allow. It doesn't seem right. And you can tell me whether or not it's okay. It may be a good thing. I don't know. But it doesn't appear to me to be a good thing at all. And I just, every time I see one of these leaf blowers, a gardener's blowing it in the middle of the street, they're in the middle of the street just blowing it, and off the ground just blowing it. It does not seem to me it'd be a good thing. I wish we could take a look at that. I, I just don't like it. But anyway. Anything else?
Well, I just, I wanted to thank Jim Cook, Lou Shelley, the city manager, and Noel, no, Jay Townsend for calling in this morning on WFSU. And did we miss somebody? Was there somebody?
Lou Norvell.
Lou Norvell.
Lou Norvell called in. Our acting auditor, I'm sure, called in after we left.
Jim Cook called in.
Is there somebody that didn't call in?
I think maybe we didn't harass Tom Coe.
We didn't, Tom Coe didn't call in?
You haven't said what it's for yet.
What do you, what do you...
WFSU Free Public Radio was the fundraiser.
Call now.
It was a donation kind of a...
No, we actually started the day at 7:00 together, so we're finishing it up here numerous hours later, and we...
They're actually there. You can call now.
Yes, they are. And I was gonna actually make a plug for people to call.
But it won't count for y'all. It'll count to whoever's there.
414-1234.
1-800-926-8889.
I just think that that is one of the most, the most wonderful assets that we have in this community is WFSU, and I know virtually everyone I know listens to it on the way to work and driving around in the car. So we went out this morning, it's from, from 7:00 and 8:30, and we had a wonderful time, but we were doing shout-outs to all of you saying, they should call, they should call, they should call during the time.
I didn't hear the shout-out, but I did get a text message. I won't say from whom.
Somebody got to you.
I said it. It's okay.
I was within two minutes of the deadline.
Really?
Well, wait a minute now. Jane and I do this every year, so we gotta save some time, save some of these calls when Jane and I are on there. We do it every...
We'll let you know.
Every year.
Honorable mention goes to...
I forgot to call you folks here and, and tell y'all to call in, but I will, I remember that the next time.
You can harass everyone.
No, but it is a good cause. Honorable mention, Mayor, goes to treasurer clerk, who was the first city...
Yes.
No, he wasn't.
No, Lou Norvell was the first one.
Lou Norvell was the first.
He called right away.
But he was the first appointed official who called.
Think somebody's trying to get some brownie points.
Thank you all for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for the support.
All right. It is a good, it is a good program. It is good. I'm glad you called in this morning. We gotta keep NPR, especially on the morning drive, on, on the, on the air.
Call now.
I want to make two other comments. If you're not, just hang on one second. First of all, we have a budget meeting tomorrow night. I was out of town in Chicago, actually, with the Star Metro folks last week, and I couldn't come, but I heard such stories of your antics that I changed my plan and realized it was very important to go, because you've involved us more than just window dressing.
Listen, now is what time to budget.
It is. If you'll give me a chance, I will. It's at Good Shepherd tomorrow night on Thomasville Road between 6:00 and 7:30. So I'd like to invite everybody, especially people in the northeast, since it's near them, to come to that. And I also wanted to basically take note of the fact that we're actually bringing in a lot of projects for a landing. I mean, last week, we opened Franklin Boulevard. This week, Mayhem Drive, and I'm maybe getting these times wrong, but bottom line is that once a week, and then tomorrow at 10:00, we're going to be opening another part, the second phase of Gaines Street. So we are trying to get these things done. I know everybody's inconvenienced by the, all the construction that's been going on, but by the end of the year, when we celebrate this next New Year, there're going to probably be a lot fewer orange barrels around for you to have to maneuver. So I thought, I've just been very excited about that.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for reminding everybody that those things are going to happen within this year, and they are. We're looking forward to it. I don't, unless y'all want to share something else, we're standing firm.
Thank you.
Call now.
Must have been in a supervisory capacity. A master's degree in engineering or an MBA degree combined with an undergraduate degree in engineering may be substituted for one year of the required experience, or an equivalent combination of training and experience is acceptable, provided that the applicant possesses registration as...